Hunting and harvesting and gathering here for generations. And we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of this local tribe and to all those who share this. All right, are there any changes? For the proposed agenda or shall we consider it adopted? Okay, hearing no changes, we will consider it adopted. All right, I need. I take a motion to approve the March twenty twenty three board minutes. All right, it's been moved in seconded, all in favor? All right. None are opposed, the motion passes. Uh, now we need a motion for approval of the March twenty twenty three bills and contributions. We should announce the amount, we usually do that. Yeah, when we make the motion, you usually read out the amount.
Got it. One million six hundred sixty two thousand eighty eight dollars and five cents on the eighteenth day of April twenty twenty three.
All right, I hear second.
Sure.
All right, it's been moved in seconded, all in favor? And now we have the financial report.
Okay, so for the library operations, we'll start and then we'll move on to Penny with the bond portion of the financial report. So our actually business trends for March, as of March close, the library closed. With the ability to pay a hundred and thirty nine days of operating costs. So what what measurement is, it's an internal tracking tool to measure on the help of the help of our time balance. So we're taking the annual adopted expenditure budget. The one day of operating cost for three four hours, twelve hours. That's what that measurement is. I'm so including the reserve capital balance, which is about one point two million and net of our encumbrances of two hundred and forty six thousand. Our available cash and investments balance is currently at six million, one thousand seven hundred and sixty seven dollars. And for our expenditure trend for March close, we have spent and encumbered twenty three percent of our annual expenditure budget so so far this year. And March expenses at March expenses totaled nine hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifty six dollars. Our personnel costs were six hundred fifty four thousand, three hundred and twenty five dollars. Our capital and our capital books and materials were eight eighty eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty two. We paid a total of fifty six thousand, three hundred and seventy seven dollars for our MK equipment checkout kiosk and our return station. Uh, we've got about twenty of those, some of those do include SPS, which they they do cover their charge for that, but that's for the annual. Uh, service subscription as well as the software licensing, which includes payment processing and all that. Um, also, let's see, our 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 security guard charges were thirty three thousand, nine hundred and forty seven dollars. This does not yet include South Hill and Indian Trail. It does capture the additional security that we have down at Central right now, which was about nine nine thousand dollars for for the month of February. Um, and then our utilities totaled sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty five dollars. We also had interfund charges in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and ninety seven, which does include one of the final first quarter charges. Um, on to the business office news. So over the past month, we've been working with our insurance agency, uh, Hub International to obtain some quotes for insurance for the library. So these additional policies are for site, uh, site pollution and workplace violence. The site pollution basically is some extra liability coverage for us. Um, as an example, if there's um, could uh, any contaminants in one of our public restrooms. And there's a subsequent lawsuit that we're involved in, it would it would cover us there. And then for workplace violence, that one's, I guess, fairly self-explanatory, but it's just um, additional coverage for employees as well as for patrons. That are on site. Um, and then another, another piece of news. Uh, this one's pretty exciting. So our accountant, Minnie Huang, she recently earned a pin commemorating her five years of employment at the library. So I wanted to give a shout out to Minnie and and congratulate and and thank her for the service. And finally, uh, the city has officially begun the twenty twenty four budget process. This process is rolled out in various phases throughout the year. Um, it does start with our six-year capital improvement plan. Uh, we we just completed that last week. Um, we typically what we do for our internal process, I'll be budgeting with managers and with library staff for the next few months. And then I will bring um. I will bring the budget, the twenty four budget forward to board for approval in late summer, maybe early fall. And the city will adopt early, uh, December is typically when when that goes through. And so I'd like to open up now for any questions before we move on to the bond.
All right, thank you, Nicole.
No, it was just in the initial process, do you see perceived any large changes from this past six-year budget looking forward?
Um, some, we've, we've pretty much accounted for the potential, especially with with the inflation rate. We've expected a large increase. We've also had a lot of uh, growth in our business. We currently have a hundred twenty nine employees, whereas historically we've been in the high eighties, low, low nineties at fully staffed. So yes, there are going to be some large changes, but we will go through that, through that process and explain, explain everything that that we oversee. Once we, once we bring that forward.
Thanks, Amy. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Nicole.
Okay, good evening. Um, I wanted to lead off with, um, last month I talked to you that about the fact that I was. Creating an accounting uh. A cost center setup for our Nevada street development and the kiosk installations. And so I thought it would be a good time to bring back. The numbers that I presented at the at year end for December twenty twenty two. And so on the top half of that sheet, you're going to see remaining budgets. And if you look over to the right, where we identified one point five seven million for kiosk installations. It was that discussion that kind of led us to uh, get board approval to to develop Nevada. And move forward with our installations. Most of that budget capacity was residing in the PMO column. And for those of you that may not know, that's, that's a non-site specific. Category, so if, if it's not, if it's not direct for Shadle Central or otherwise, and it serves the branches all across the system. We carry that capacity in that column. So after we had um, approval to move forward, I, I created a, an accounting structure that you'll now see down below. And in the middle of that graph, or that um, set of financials, you'll see Nevada plus three. Nevada will get one of the four kiosks. And then we have three locations, Yokes, Catholic Charities, and the third that's not assigned. So now you'll see how I've got that budget spread out in that column. That one point five is now in its own cost center. Now, uh, if you go to the next page, you'll see that I've got a financial, the expenditure statement built for this site. If you've looked at our financial statement packages um, in the board packets in prior months. You would see a statement like this, an expenditure statement for each of the sites. And I have not, I used the Liberty Park and the and the um, the Hive. New construction sites, just as a, as an estimator on how to allocate this out. We are not held um, in any way to, to, we can move around amongst these line items, they're not written in stone. And that's, that's routine, especially at this late year, fifth year of the bond. Now, this account code structure will also serve Nicole in operations. We built this in such a way that it can track the capital expenditures here. And then once it goes into service, Nicole will be able to use that same infrastructure and she'll have a. An expenditure statement to show you on the operations side as well. Um, one thing I wanted to remind you that remaining budgets in the bond is equal to unobligated cash. So our total unobligated cash at the end of March was three million dollars. And that's distributed out in those columns um, where I pointed out the Nevada plus three. So any questions on? On that information? Okay, and then lastly, I just, we didn't have any obligations executed under the special signing authority, so.
Well, it looks like everything's on track, Penny, yeah?
It is, yes, we're, we're, we're looking pretty good. Um, actually. You'll see, uh, there's a small expenditure in twenty twenty three on, in that uh, expenditure statement. And that's for the feasibility study. Um, and then we've got some encumbrances um, of forty seven thirty each for each of the four. And that was for design uh, for each of the sites. Now, of course, we haven't realized those, that's just encumbered. And that would, of course, be a cost um, under the group for slash Integris umbrella. So we have, um, we do have quotes in for the, the um, electrical installations at Yokes and Catholic Charities. But um, those weren't um, encumbered in March, you'll see those show up on the April encumbrance column.
Is still international also going to manage the kiosk placement projects or?
Yes.
Yes. All right, any other questions for Penny? All right, thank you, Penny.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, and now we're going to move on to the bond construction project update, Lorraine.
Good evening, um, I'm happy to be here to help present where we are. We now have all branches open and operating, so uh, the main. Um, you know, scope of the bond, we've, we've gotten through design, we've gone through construction and you're now open. So the rest of the year, we're just going to be doing some closeouts, some minor changes. That, that the library has, you know. Uh, expressed interest in um, doing some warranty work. You know, there's some uh, follow-up on some of the furniture for Indian Trail and and South Hill. Uh, shelving yet to be finished in May. So basically, um, you know, all the buildings are open. Yes, the kiosks are moving forward, but you know, the main tasks are done. So in general, uh, things are going well. And um, since we're not having any other, um, you know, big projects to talk about. This will be our, my last board report, but of course, I'm, you know, available to uh. I will be working with Penny and Karis to uh, you know, get all the closeout and all the changes done to close out the bond program. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Lorraine.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate all the updates and the pictures.
No problem.
All right, the next on the item on the agenda is the chairman's report. And all I have this evening, so I'd just like to welcome Danny to her first uh, first meeting with us. And with that, uh, I'll turn it over to Andrew for the directorship.
All right. Thank you. A couple of highlights from the written report. One, just a reminder, Friends of the Library Book Sale, April twenty seventh to twenty ninth at the Shadle Park Library. Uh, similarly, a library giving day was April fourth, and that's run. Uh, with a huge amount of support from Skylar, uh, through the Spokane Public Library Foundation. Uh, that raised nearly uh, five thousand dollars uh, this year, so uh, that's off and thank you to Skylar, who isn't here today. Uh, but congratulations uh, due towards the foundation as well. Uh, last week I was in Biakam for the Library Council of Washington meeting. This is a group that advises the Secretary of State and State Librarians on how to utilize LSTA funds. Uh, which is federal dollars coming in from the Library Services Technology Act, uh, but is used for various. Uh, things in the library world. Uh, and one of the things that I had suggested that they focus on giving the issues that we're seeing on a national basis around safety, security. Mental health, well-being is to do some statewide investment on training around those areas as well as exploring. Uh, some avenues like incident trackers that all libraries could use throughout the state. Because we're all facing these issues statewide. Uh, so be anxious to secure if they take that suggestion to part. Um, as far as other things go, uh, just a heads up, Overdrive, which is one of our big digital uh, media providers. They are uh, stopping the use of the Overdrive app and switching uh, to the Libby app, which has been around for a couple of years. About communications, uh, will be handling uh, that content with customers to make sure that people are prepared. Our star spotlight for March went to Amy Virchow. And Amy is uh, at our Hilliard Library. And she's just been really instrumental in developing the partnership with Spokane Public Schools. Uh, primarily around procedural uh, development, documenting procedures and transferring materials between the two organizations. So that's a document that I imagine is going to organically grow as we're growing that business between uh, schools and libraries. But really happy to have that as a first start. Uh, and our libraries will be utilized as hosting uh, for the mayor's budget town halls in May. So Shadle Park, Hilliard and South Hill will all serve in that capacity uh, in May. And then just a reminder, and thank you for the board retreat, uh, May second, one to four, we'll be having that. At the Central Library. And then not part of the uh, before, but we just found this out uh, this morning. Uh, Bataia Streeter, who's our social services manager, uh, pitched an idea with. Uh, peers Spokane to BetterHelp together for a grant to help increase capacity for social services downtown. We had originally applied for about two hundred thousand dollars for the grant. BetterHelp Together said yes, and let's double it. Um, so this is an commitment for the next two years, uh, and we'll be able to place these services at Central and Shadle Park as well as Liberty Park. Um, so we're really excited to get the support uh, from the community. Uh, this is a grant process that's very localized, and you have a lot of providers that are reviewing uh, the, the, the grants. Uh, so to have that community buy-in to to recognize the importance of the work that we're doing uh, at Central. Uh, and to recognize the importance of expanding it, uh, is, is really great. We have not been doing this program, not even a year. Um, so Bataia, that's really proved that Bataia really, you know, hit the ground running in trying to, to maximize community resources. Uh, in, in an approachable way for the public. So this will provide counseling services, mental health services, uh, as well as drug and addiction uh, services.
With an expansion of like library staff, that would be like just thinking about Bataia and what her role is then now. In addition to that, managing community partnerships.
Yeah, that's something that we'll have to address, community partnerships uh, at a bigger, a bigger way later. But right now, this provides actual peer Spokane employees. That would be, so it does include a site supervisor.
Okay.
Um, so that part would be managed by peer in, in collaboration with our. So usually. Sort of multi-year, two-year at this point. So is it two hundred thousand each year?
I believe, do you know, Paul, two hundred thousand each year?
Yeah, I think it went to three years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, which was uh, more than we, we were asking for. But this is case management too, this is important to realize, we're carrying on sustaining a relationship with folks in need. Which we don't have the capacity right now for. And so it's really a major, and it also doesn't add to FTEs for our staff right now. But it's perceptive that we need to think about it for the future. And it's two, uh, two case managers and one supervisor from here to watch over and report statistics and that's.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Andrew, and Zach, if there's just.
Yeah, I don't know if I have any like direct things, um, one thing coming up that probably been. Uh, and awareness is the drug use ordinance for consideration that would. I have library impact too. Uh, we're really just waiting on the legislature to see what they're going to do first, so we'll know by then, then we. Uh, hopefully, let's say extended session, but we haven't heard rumors that they're going to extend it. Um, potentially the legislature would preempt anything the city does.
So at the state level, you preempting?
Yeah, so we. Uh, it was going to come from about this week, he said, let's just wait, but we need to see what they do. Um, there's also still a lot of questions yesterday at a briefing session, we had SPD there to give us updates about. Current policies around drug use or drug possession and what SPD does. And it was unclear, um. If they're really do, taking advantage of all the tools that they have around drug possession right now. So right now they have the ability to confiscate drugs or paraphernalia, and they don't do that. And so it's a question of like, what would this ordinance do if you're not even doing it right now? Um. There's no real resolution. But so that's, that's a question, just wanted to talk about that, since that's a big, big issue that's been up in the news a lot. Um, I think I had a couple of questions, I guess, for both board and staff side. First is, I was just wondering, um, how have you been resolving issues of bathroom use? And issues because STA is having a lot of issues. And we're having people come to, uh, counties complaining about STA. So it's like, a lot of overlapping population would be at the Central Library, so I wasn't sure what you all have done.
So we have a security that pays particular attention, uh, especially on the first floor restroom, so we're very just vigilant.
Let's not checking people into the house. As STA has closed down their first floor.
Yes.
And let one person in at a time.
Yeah.
So it's just more vigilant.
We're just, we, we just try to keep it win, and, uh, you know, there's a. There is, I think, some ownership and part of some of the users where they will come and report, uh, if they are seeing any activity going on. Did you have something to add, Karen?
Uh, just to say, the key difference between us and STA is that they have that check-in system. We have a dedicated guard that we brought on to monitor that area. Well, the front door and the bathroom, so we, and we also started propping the doors open as a best practice. Andrew saw from some West Side Libraries, and we saw that to be really effective. Uh, we were considering measures similar to what STA is doing. But once we implemented these, we didn't see the need, or we haven't seen it yet.
So it's been effective so far, or mitigated.
Reduced a lot of our issues, it doesn't disappear.
Uh, that's helpful context, because we're getting conversations about that. And then uh, with STA, there's a couple um, things that we're voting on this week, STA that is always helpful for input. And so one of those is Central City Line, uh, and we're talking about promotional period for City Line. And there's basically really three proposals that we're looking at. So City Line's going to launch in March, or July, July fifteenth, we're looking at a promotional period for free, right? Um, there's one proposal through July for a couple of weeks, July through Labor Day, July through the end of the holidays, or July through May twenty twenty four. So I guess that's more than three. Um, May twenty twenty four has come up because that's when the services will increase. Right now it's supposed to be fifteen minute service and it'll increase in seven and a half minutes when they are able to staff up. So that's the target date for it. Um, and it gives a nice long window, gets people through the winter. I'm, I'm going reverse order here. Um, there's costs, but the costs with STA are all. They have like built-in budget for City Line, but they're actually coming in way under, so potentially to use it there. Um. The next one was, what did I say, holidays, so again, getting through the holidays, peak period through downtown. Um, September, the advantage is there, uh, it gets to the start of the school year for the SEC. Um, all SEC students already get pre-transit, uh, but it'd be guests and people that go there. Uh, enforcement actually won't start until October, when they have people on the buses to enforce it, they won't have that stepped up till October. And then the two weeks was just like a, a quick splash to try to get attention to them. So I don't know if people had input on that on itself. And then the second issue, actually I'll stick with that first.
Yeah. I think their goal is to increase consistent ridership that they should, if, and they have the funds to do it, to do it for the full year. I know that when they launched the app to have that, like, they did it for a month and we rode the bus way more. Um, and sort of like, we're telling everybody, like, oh, did you pay? Because just download the app and then you get it for the free lunch. Because I don't think that the publication on that part was as strong as it could be, and so especially if they're looking for building that, that core group of people. Will use that service so that it is this center line that they hope it to be, that I would strongly lean towards having it be for the year. Or till May twenty twenty four.
I'd like to see it be free forever. But you know, I realize there's financial costs to that, but one of the things that I always appreciated in Seattle was that, you know, you pay when you get on. And then you pay when you get off, so that they created that free zone in the downtown. And that was just wonderful to be able to get around your downtown core without feeling like you had to, you know, really. I heard about the City Line, I thought, oh, wow. Someday.
In somewhat relation to that, we are uh, in discussion with STA about how the library could serve as. Uh, a place where you do not have ID or are not in the school system can get access to the youth bus pass. Um, so we're scheduling that uh, meeting sometime in the beginning of May or. Would this come out of your budget or the history? It would be yes to us, so it's just a, a, a way to help uh, bridge that ID gap.
Would there also be conversation that anybody, even if they were substituted to a school, could sign up there? Discussions.
Discussions.
I know there's a legislature that is just about to pass, like, it has to go back for concurrence, but an amendment that says that. Free transit has to be low barrier accessibility, and so. Yeah, so they're going to need to look at that as STA.
Yeah, and we're happy to play a partner in providing access to it. That certainly says it just makes sense for my community standpoint, I'll be satisfied.
And then I, I kind of goes to my next one, unless I even had other feelings about, I won't put you on blast as a. Connect card and selling connect cards and an administrative fee, I don't know if you've had conversations around that, but there's retailers. Um, that's the bus path, the, the cards themselves. Um, they've expanded to retail networks like Safeways and stuff, or you can go online, or you can go to the Plaza. But looking at, I don't know if that's come up in conversation, uh, but they're looking at charging five dollars for a bus card to get it. And then we're discussing if it should come with an automatic five dollars back or not, and if there should be a replacement card cost to it. Um, they're proposing five dollar costs, there's a wave the five, the replacement costs where there's a one dollar. Proposal too, that's a kind of a compromise, I don't know if people have thoughts about that, I'm just using this as my time to get feedback.
Obviously, it's free for community as always, preferred. Yeah, especially we're talking about something so core as transportation. But it's not unheard of in cities, like in Chicago, they had, they implemented the GoCard and you would charge ten dollars. And then when you were done with your GoCard, you could return it and you would get reimbursed that ten dollars, um, but.
And what's the replacement card policy for the library? Does it happen often for replacement cards or?
I mean, often enough, I mean, I think some people wanted to switch out cards when we got the new art assigned to them. But it's, you know, they're not smart cards.
Right.
They're, they're dumb cards. There, there's not an RFID connection or anything, I think that I assume of the, the STA, which is costly. But we, we, we would rather not be. And our organization would rather not be taking.
Right, right.
It's, it's more costly for us to do those transactions than not. Yeah.
Stakeholder engagement.
All right, excellent. Uh, any questions? Uh any questions? Thank you. Okay, and now we have the communication reports.
Amanda. Hi, um so a quick report for you all tonight, we, as Andrew mentioned, we had a successful Library Giving Day campaign thanks to partnership. Um with the foundation and Skylar and we raised more than five thousand dollars, I don't know if Andrew mentioned that, but. Pretty cool, that was our goal, so we exceeded our goal. Um at the South Hill and Indian Trail openings, if you missed it, we did a tote bag pop-up, so one thing that we've been. Tossing around in our team is how we can sell merchandise to customers to get our brand out there, give people an opportunity to buy tote bags, buy shirts and. Um working around how we can do that in the best way, and so as a low barrier way of doing that, we've been doing these pop-up shops at the two openings and our next pop-up shop will be at the Friends of the Library book sales, we'll be selling those. There um in late April. And then a kind of cool thing happened where the Thrive Center, uh we've been partnering with them a lot, giving them translated materials so that, oh, and the Thrive Center is. Um a center with Ukrainian refugees, it's housed, it's in that hotel that's down on Cowley, um and so. Um we've been partnering with them, taking them activated library cards, taking them translated materials, and they actually sent. Someone over from their organization to film an in-language Russian video. It's in Russian, because a lot of Ukrainians speak both Russian and Ukrainian, so she spoke Russian in this video and gave a tour of the library. Um and it's been really successful, we've gotten lots of views on it and we've been using it as well as them. Um and it just kind of has inspired us, we've been, as you know, we've been doing a lot of language access work and doing translated material, so we're talking now about potentially doing some more in-language videos. Um so that'll be cool and coming up. Our top posts on social for the entire month were uh about South Hill opening on all of our channels on Facebook, Instagram and. Um Twitter and then also had some fun content on TikTok about podcasting. Um Women's History Month reads, so not all about South Hill out there, although one of the videos was really popular there about South Hill opening. And then um great local media coverage this month. Um on a number of topics, but the the kind of notable piece that came out uh was a story from Vital City, New York City. Um that Andrew is heavily featured in right at the beginning and it's all about restored justice programs and. You know, library being more than books for communities that need um access to justice opportunities, so um. Not completing our reports.
And now we have a programming report from Jason Johnson.
I'm gonna stand up. Everybody um. My name's Jason Johnson, I'm the Community Engagement Manager for Spokane Public Library. And when that mean, that title means a lot of different things and a lot of different organizations for us, it means that I oversee all of our public events and programming system wise.
One second, I'm gonna share it on here too.
Um today, though, we're gonna talk a little bit about a thing that's been in uh. The works for a very long time and we're still not quite there yet, thing that we're, for lack of a better term, calling the value score, but uh hey. Don't get ruined in the surprise. And what this is, in a nutshell, is a way that we're gonna use, we're gonna use this to evaluate. The value and the the success of our programs and help us make decisions on what programs we do moving forward. And what we maybe drop that we have been doing in favor of other things like that. You can move to the next slide now, um. Little background on library programming measurement for as long as you can can imagine, here's a beautiful program of a guy playing Slide the Hat. In nineteen twenty-six at the, you know, this, I don't know what that picture is, but attendance has been the only uh. The only way we've measured program success, well, not the only, the main way that it's been measured, so you have a program, you have this many people show up. Oh, fifty people show up for that, that was great, thirty for that, not as good. And it doesn't tell you a lot of things that you need to know about that program. Really undervalues small programs and one-on-ones, things that are designed for a smaller group. When you're looking at the total numbers, you'll say like, oh man, that one only had five people in it. This one had a hundred, we're always gonna do the hundred, but that, we don't want that to be the case necessarily. And it's really just looking at the output, which is the. Number of people coming there instead of the outcomes of what does that program do for the community. And um. This is where the value score will come in to help us there, you have a ton of data that was in there, that's all of our programs and uh. Scores, the score numbers are really just noisy and weird right now, we're really just trying to calibrate how to score these, what works, but I'll run you through some stuff. I wanna give you a quick overview of the vision for programming in Spokane Public Library, which has changed in the last few years. We really wanna specialize and go deep into specialized topics that we have. Um worked with, so we have an arts educator, music educator, video production educator, a business librarian, local history specialist, writing specialist, current affairs. Environment STEM teens, early learners. These are the topics that we will be doing programs on. And if you go to the next slide. Really, we wanna be great at the things that we choose, which is those things, instead of being mediocre at everything and spreading ourselves too thin. So we've hired people that are experts or we've identified people that are experts in their topics and they do in-depth programming on their subjects. And what we hope from this is that it'll, these programs provide more value per attendee. By doing these specialized things, by nature, we are actually shrinking. The attendance in some of them, we can't do. Uh hands-on arts activity for kids for four hundred kids, it's gotta be, there's rent limited registration. But we're gonna prove is that the value that's provided to each kid in there far outweighs the the law.
So as a result of that. The suggestion in that introspection, then what you're saying is that. You've cut down on all of this. To condense it into this, so you're able to better target what you're doing here for.
Yeah, yeah. Instead of doing real surface level things, like on all the topics we can, we're really just hammering in on the, on, we have experts that can do really, take a really deep dive into. I guess, business research or local history and do programming based around those things, we still do. Some of the traditional, a lot of the traditional library things, and we do work with places like Humanities Washington or SNAP or other organizations, we bring in experts. In other fields to do the programming. But we're really trying to focus heavily on. Our staff that we have and the the skills that they have and really educating the community in that. Sense.
Good.
Um. Go ahead. So the value score explained, sort of, uh. I like this guy here, um. What is it? Um it's, like I said, it's a valuation tool for programs and events, what we're trying to do with this is pre-bake in the outcomes measure, so there's. Libraries have basically used one method of outcomes measures forever, which is a survey at the end of the event. And you get basically the same information from that survey every single time and they say, that was great, you say, our programs are great. And that's, so it's not really that useful in a lot of ways, but it's really hard for us, I'm not gonna follow. If a ten-year-old comes in, takes guitar lessons for two months, we're not gonna follow him around for six years to see if his his math skills have improved and his science skills, and if his grade or confidence has improved. We know there's studies that that stuff does happen, we also know that. Class size matters, which is a big deal in the schools and with us, so we know that one-on-one instruction. Is better. On the whole than large group instruction, people, the kid will get more out of it, so. We're baking in a lot of these things into the program before we even start it, so we know we're making decisions the right way. And you'll stacking is encouraged, which means. If there's a, you'll, I haven't given the full quiz that you get here, but there's basically a quiz you go through before you start your program, you answer a bunch of questions and you're given. A score of that program. Um and if you say, man, I wish I had a higher score, you go back and you say, well, I'm gonna add, I'm gonna make sure that I give clear learning objectives at the beginning of this event. Or I'm gonna have a way for them to follow up with me, so you're gonna basically just. Add more value to your program to get your score up and all you're doing is uh. Increasing the value of that program, we can move on. Um so the questions that we ask and the things that we value are, like I said, class size, does it utilize a library resource, are there clear learning objectives? Will you be creating something in that event with your hands? Is there a skill that you're learning and walking away with? Does the program involve group discussion, are there local experts that come in, do we collaborate with an outside organization? Um is there a way for the. Uh customer, the attendee to follow up easily if they need to? Does this, where, does this promote diversity, are we working with a diverse audience, are we working with historically underrepresented communities? Um is this providing a platform for a. Pre-existing event, but we're just amplifying it by having it in our space? Is this helping to build communities and is this actually? Providing a service that would be cost prohibitive for most people to do, so if you're sitting down. With Mark Pond and the Business Research Center and he puts you on the Bloomberg Terminal. And you get all this research, you're obviously not gonna subscribe to Bloomberg for for what we pay for it, I don't know if I wanna say it out loud, but. But that's stuff I got, or access to the audio engineering things, or access to the video cameras and all that stuff that you probably wouldn't be, most people can't before, gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars. To buy brand-new camera gear to learn how to do it, so. We value, we do, you plug in study questions on all this and you get a score out of it, and that's what we're trying to calibrate what that score should be and the weight of all these values, but. Can move on there. And all that being said about how numbers of attendees and all that doesn't tell you anything, that's what I'm gonna show you here because we're, the scores will just kind of be noise, but. In the month of March alone. There are overall two hundred and seventy-two events, that includes a hundred and ten one-on-one sessions with. Mark Pond, business stuff, there's one-on-one lessons with music lessons, there's audio or a. Book and engineer in the audio engineering department. And there's video production stuff, but two hundred and seventy-two events, four thousand three hundred and thirty people came to events in our libraries in March alone. Sixty-eight of those were adult events. That we had throughout the whole system, um. Sixteen hundred people. Forty-eight youth events and storytimes are forty-six of those storytimes. Are are bred and bred, but they'll always be the highest number of attendees we do and that's great. I don't know that I should say this, but I was trying to figure out in other libraries uh. What they did in March, and a lot of them, you can't look back at their calendar in the past, Seattle Public Library let me do that, um. And they did a total, overall, a total of about fifty programs and thirty of those were. Every day they have ARP and to do tax aid, so really they did like twenty pro- public programs in the month of March. So that I could see, maybe there's stuff that's not on there. Boise, I wanted to look at Boise, but they don't let you look in the past, um. Well, all that being said, we're doing a ton of things here, go there and it's a huge focus of this library, so. It's uh. There's a lot going on, you wanna move on, I was gonna highlight a few new programs real quick. And some adult programs, um just to give you a taste of what we do, these pictures aren't. Not reflective of what I'm about to say, these are just cool pictures of kids. Um we have our STEM librarian, Botley Coding Robot Program that kid and um for kids five to ten. Um our teen librarian does this thing called Hamago, is that how you pronounce it? Which stands for uh hanging out, messing around, geeking out, really providing a um.
Maybe that at work all day.
I'm gonna count you on our stats. It's a great community for middle schoolers, a real big focus of the teen um program, so it's really just giving them a place and that's at um Hilliard to go. Hang out and do stuff there. Um Mason, who was our youth environmentalist specialist, who you met, I believe, a couple or last month. The seat bombs program, I think you talked about that, so we want. And then Rema Lisa is our youth art specialist. And they did a painting with nature program using like turmeric, turmeric? Can I say the word, beets? Coffee, we had to do something with the business office around purchasing those things, because you're not allowed to buy food for programs. We don't need to get to anyone, they're painting with it. And if you move on there. And Vanessa Strange, who is our adult services manager, oversees a lot of the adult programming. Um some things that she would like me to highlight is, um we have some local author talk and tours in the Inland Northwest Special Collections. There's Sharma Shields, who's our writing education specialist. Um we had Jess Walter in there, so people got to sit down and learn from Jess how he uses or how he's used the Inland Northwest Special Collections for researching his writing. And that was a, we had. People. Trying to get onto that wait, there's a long waitlist and uh people pounding down the doors to get in to see him. And we also um wanna talk about. Something that our current affairs uh specialist Shane did was a. Programming with Range Podcast, they did a thing on how do you, how jerk, it's a journalism. Project that they're doing and trying to train people to be journalists locally, so you're reporting on your own community instead of having to go to a. Some school elsewhere and then report on a community in like Dayton, Ohio that you've never been in. Um and he had a public, how to file public records requests like a journalist. Uh program, the thing you see in the middle is actually a. We partnered with the Spokesman Review for a um Northwest Passages program, their book club there. But we do all kinds of things, um. Get the button there. So if you have any questions, you can ask them, now I know it's a lot of information in that packet too, so.
Well, I I just really appreciated how the. Figuring out the score as you're scoring in advance is driving people to build a better program.
That's the intent, yeah, we're we're gonna, we're. This is early days of of actually scoring things and there's things on there, you look at the numbers like that 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 don't make sense and we gotta figure out why. Certain, we gotta see what, why certain things aren't getting scored as high as we think they should.
Any other questions for Jason?
Are there examples of other library systems that use this type of tool to measure?
I wish, um I don't. I mean, there's people that have some kind of rubrics of what areas they'll do programming in and like about it, but not quite. This level, so it's kind of where you're blazing a trail for this, so. Hopefully we'll get it figured out and then we'll present on it. At a conference and have research done.
We really need it to programming. Uh yeah. So. I I wouldn't be surprised if I were to.
Yeah, the comparison to Seattle, that's incredible.
Yeah, though. I don't know what's going, I mean, maybe they have stuff that's not on their calendar, but it's pretty, pretty radical.
Well, then, do other libraries have? The. Programming assigned to a devoted. Manager versus, I mean, I I feel like that also is probably putting us in a category.
I think some rules that we choose are unique, but in the, we have these specialists, a lot of libraries will. Choose to hire a librarian. Who their skill set is sort of their hobby. So they also do video where we sort of put that on the head and would rather bring that expertise in and we can teach you. How to work in library, you know, rather than, it just seems more impactful.
We know a lot of libraries will, they wanna do music lessons, they might hire somebody to do music lessons for two weeks and then that's, we did music lessons. Instead of really digging in deep into those things, so we're, we are pretty unique and we're fortunate that we can do this sort of.
Uh David S. Pumpkins aside. I I wonder how you're judging all of these as you're doing them, so for example, if you have. An audience for a Jess Walter doing a talk. And you're getting that immediate feedback as opposed to something you're working on over the course of a couple of months. How are you comparing the apples and oranges?
Um, well, do you mean like the feedback afterwards, I mean, we still take, I mean, we, I, we aren't really doing surveys at the moment, we could still do those, like I said, but. Really. I have our experts really trying to pick out what they're doing and knowing. Just Walter is gonna be massively popular, let's bring him in. Um. But I don't know that we are really doing that.
I think that there's still an element that we're still building that we're going. Um which. It's sometimes a bit uh in 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 free, but I I I think that we'll be figuring that out as we get settled of, you know, what is that? Feedback that we need that's that's impactful as far as.
We will know. One of the things we'll look at too is this, the score, I didn't mention this, the score you get is a score, then you multi, you get that multiplied by the attendees at the event. So if you're doing an event, even if you're having an amazing score, but it's supposed to be for a large group. And you're getting ten people showing up regularly, we're gonna, it's gonna show up in in the total score that, okay. This is great, either we need to figure out a way to get more people here or. This is a great idea, but we're gonna abandon it because it's not, it's not getting the value we need.
How annoying or much of a barrier do you think it would be if you had an option for people to like scan their library card? So that you could see for like, thinking about, I'm a recurring.
Checking in at a event.
Yeah, like I I go to Storytime regularly, the fact that I go to Storytime regularly is making that program even more impactful because it's a recurring event. And it's a skill set that's being built, like it's.
We.
I love that you're undertaking this and it seems like it's.
Yeah, we experimented with. People were checking in at events during some previous organizational goal we had. Um the technology wasn't quite where we needed it to make it easy and it was, a lot of people don't wanna. like, they like their privacy and don't want they think we're gonna use that information. We're waiting. I don't think it's a bad idea to know who's going, but it could be an optional thing, you know?
We could throw like a scanner outside, like my kids like to see who's gonna beep the card to check something out, and if they get to beep it when they come in the room, and it doesn't have, it's not a mandatory thing, but it's a thing that you could do. I don't know.
Yes.
It doesn't need to beep. Because the machines do not beep, but thank you.
Just the point of clarification too, just to give a, a sense of the scope. These are just programs at the libraries. It doesn't include someone signs up for the Hive and it needs some sort of community event. Uh they didn't go through large channels for sponsorship or anything like that. So the, the breadth of what we're um able to have an impact in, you know, community is, it, it is much bigger. I had a question for you, because I don't know the answer. But how do we collect uh, how we, how, how do we collect residents at the Hive, artists and residents that consider the program? Or something?
Um, our, our residents do provide public programs, which we measure the success of those. We haven't put the Hive application for us.
Do you consider a, a public program, or they would have to actually do the public program in order to be?
In this system, they, it's when they do a program. I don't know how I would score them. For six months, if they get points, points every single day. No, yeah, they, when they, they provide multiple programs a month, each of them at the Hive, so those do, they do provide service there for us, so. I don't know, I have to think of it.
I'll just add the point of community groups. I was here at the New Trail Neighborhood Council Meeting last week, and it was a full room, like almost forty people. They're super excited to be back in the library because they were across the street at the church for the last the last previous month, and there were like ten people there. So just the change of venue was crazy. It was crazy. Which is great, like it's changing the whole neighborhood again because they've been spread out. So it was super exciting to have this space for the first month. Yeah.
Not to put this on you, but it would be really interesting to think about what, in those partnerships that have been cultivated, what those metrics are and how they compare to the metrics of programming that comes from the library. To be able to tell that story, like this is what we do. We do this deep dive, and we can do this. We can focus on this because we also have these really meaningful partnerships that have these larger outreaches that are doing their own work, and so we don't have to put on these mass events because we have partners who are doing that.
Well, the, I think the ones Andrew is more furniture people that do, they don't even tell us their, they they use our meeting room for a craft fair or whatever it is. We do, the partnerships that we have that we actually do programming with do get counted into this score itself. Because there being, basically, there's a host from the, one of our staff members is forging that partnership, hosting them at the event, helping them out with that sort of thing. Even if they're doing all the content of it, it's still developing that relationship. Finding out this, a lot of what Shane does in the current affairs is identifying people in the community and putting them on the stage and and it's, it's been very, he's only been around for six months or so, really. Not gonna go over the part. Any other questions?
I had another question. Um kind of going back to beginning this report, we were just talking about language access. What does programming look like for English language learners or individuals who don't speak English as their primary language?
It doesn't look like much. Um we do not do a lot of it at this point, and we have services and things that we can do and translated materials, but it's something that we, we do have ASL interpreters at certain events um. But yeah, we haven't really dove into language programming.
I think that's, it's something that we need to develop.
Yeah, well, it'd be interesting to see as you continue to do more outreach and pull in some of these populations, having that on the forefront of the planning more specific programming.
Yeah, I know for instance, Andy Romsey, who's our Music Education Specialist, is actually working with the Ukrainian family on music lessons, so he's been brushing up on some music-related terms in Ukrainian that he can say to them. So they can say very little English in there, but yeah, something we definitely need to grow.
Maybe another thing that, because the rooms are available, like there are groups that use the spaces to then facilitate like forty times in Spanish or up, so that although it might not come from the library, it's still accessible in that regard, that space is available.
Imagine if we did something with the colleges and universities, they could probably provide some type of
Any other questions for Jason?
Jason, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, and now we're moving on to new business. We have the Capital Bond Fund final acceptance for Security Solutions. Penny?
Oh, thank you. Yes, um this agenda item is a request to the board to grant final acceptance of the Public Works Contract with Security Solutions Northwest. Uh final acceptance is basically the closing out of a public works contract. Um in February twenty twenty-one, the board approved the execution of the contract for the purchase and installation of a user access control system across all branches. That's, that's the remote lock system that allows users to enter the meeting rooms. The work has all been completed and the, and the final cost with sales tax was a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, three hundred and four dollars. Um we're currently, we, we're holding retainage in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and seventy cents. This was fairly simple contract, no subcontractors. Um they've already filed all their certified payrolls and their affidavit of wages paid with Labor and Industries. So this request is for the board to formally accept the public works project. And uh we will be able to release uh retainage to Security Solutions Northwest as soon as we get the release letters from the three state agencies.
All right. Any questions for Penny on the All right, we, I would entertain a motion.
Um I move that we accept the Public Works Project under contract with Security Solutions Northwest and approve the release of uh retainage after the receipt of the release letters from the three state agencies.
Right, seconded. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. And now we have the election of officers.
All right, according to our bylaws, it was when we need to choose new officers for the board trustees. We are looking to elect a chair and a vice chair for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I would like to put out there that it might make sense to have Laura serve as chair for another year, even though she's been there for two years, just given the nature of all the meetings.
Happy to do so.
If there's anyone interested in vice chair.
I move that we elect uh Laura as chair and Gary as vice chair for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I
And now we have the appointment of a finance committee.
Yep, so traditionally, we will have two trustees serve as a subcommittee to uh work with us in the nitty-gritty of building the budget for the next year. Um so that should say twenty twenty-four budget uh on the agenda. Uh so we are looking for two volunteers to serve on these finance subcommittee. Mary?
I'm happy to do it as well.
Mary and Laura? We need to
Yep, so we need a motion. Second, all right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I
All right. And now we want a liaison to the friends of the library.
Also, according to our bylaws, uh we need to establish a trustee liaison to be friends at the Spokane Public Library. This was a role formerly built by Jim Kirchner and stepped off the board. Um so they've been without a liaison during this time, so we are looking for one trustee to serve as that liaison.
I am happy to fill whatever role needs to be filled.
All right. Annie has raised their hand. A lot of the meetings are in summers off. So we do need to pass Danny as liaison.
So uh I need a motion to appoint Danny as liaison to friends.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I
All right, motion passed. And then we have spoken, I mean, Public Library Foundation liaison.
So also looking for a trustee to serve as the liaison to be friends foundation. Look at this. Shoddy, shoddy work of this agenda. Uh liaison to the Spokane Public Library Foundation. And I think
Yeah, I'd be happy to do this one, yeah.
We'd be interested in that.
All right, so we need a motion to appoint Shelby.
So moved.
All right, it's been seconded. All in favor?
I
All right, motion passes.
Everyone's here. Yeah, the director of So we would like two trustees to serve on these. We'd like it completed by uh December of twenty twenty-three, so we will allow for budgetary adjustments possible. But yes, we'd need two trustees. I saw Mary raise their hand. Anyone want to learn the ropes, possibly one of the new trustees on the evaluation? Thank you. Well, this is the easiest time we've ever had selecting liaisons.
All right, so we need a motion to appoint Mary and Gary for the certification committee.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I
All right, the motion passes. Now, do we have any other additional agenda items or changes? Need to do now. Very none, all right, then move on. Uh anybody sign up for public time? Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, May sixteenth, at the South Hill Library. And we aren't having any session, executive session today, so with that, I would say that we are in agreement.